We're going to call the meeting to order. Mr. Palko, can you call the roll?
Mr. Huesky?
Here.
Linda Grancy?
Here.
Scott Fishel?
Here.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Laura Gudzinski?
Aye.
Linda Grancy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carrying. That brings us to special reports. Oh, I'm sorry, you have to... Am I okay still to do these?
Yes.
Okay. We have a resolution to amend a section, so I just want to let you know it's some... I'll read it out here. So, "Resolution to amend Personnel Consent Agenda Item G Regarding Supplemental Contracts as Follow: Remove Heather Topkins, TBT Lead, 1st Grade Math; Add Jamie Field, TBT Lead, 3rd Grade Science and Social Studies, 750; Chensu Ogorka, TBT Lead, 2nd and 3rd Grade Science and Social Studies, currently reesed 3rd through 5th grade." Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Can you call the roll?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Laura Gudzinski?
Aye.
Linda Grancy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carrying. That brings us to special reports. Oh, I'm sorry, you have to... Am I okay still to do these?
Yes.
Okay. We have a resolution to amend a section, so I just want to let you know it's some... I'll read it out here. So, "Resolution to amend Personnel Consent Agenda Item G Regarding Supplemental Contracts as Follow: Remove Heather Topkins, TBT Lead, 1st Grade Math; Add Jamie Field, TBT Lead, 3rd Grade Science and Social Studies, 750; Chensu Ogorka, TBT Lead, 2nd and 3rd Grade Science and Social Studies, currently reesed 3rd through 5th grade." Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this amendment? Mr. Palko, can you call the roll?
Laura Gudzinski?
Aye.
Linda Grancy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Thank you for reminding me. Now that brings us to special reports.
Okay, I actually, I have two today. The first is... Really excited for this one, actually. We're going to have our schools give a presentation at these upcoming meetings. I'm really excited to have our first kind of lead off. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Tracy Chansky with Deb Long, and they're going to talk about Riverview.
Hi, everyone. We have a video that we would like to share with you tonight, and I would like to thank Ms. Long for putting it together. It's just a look inside of our school and the things that have been happening since we started a month ago, and we just want to say that we're so blessed to have our Riverview family and the leaders there, and so we wanted to share that with you. Before we show you the video, I also wanted to highlight, three of our students are in the picture, but only two of them could come tonight. This is Graham right here and AJ, and it was their idea to come to us and ask us if they could do something special for the Sub-Zero Mission. Graham is going to share a little history about how this was something that he's always been interested in since he's been five, and he has done a lot of work for it already. We're going to start collecting in October, and we're going to end our collection at our Veterans Day breakfast, and he's going to speak at the breakfast. He's a little bit nervous, but I assure you, he is an amazing speaker. We've been practicing. So, Graham, go ahead and share.
Hi. Hello. Did you know, according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, there were 33,129 homeless veterans in the United States of America? That is 6.8% of all homeless people. My name is Graham Heppola. I'm a 4th grader at Riverview Elementary. I first started raising money for Sub-Zero Mission when I was five years old. In total, I have raised over $30,000 and hope to meet that in goods and cash donations in this fall. Sub-Zero Mission is an organization for helping homeless veterans and other homeless people by giving warm and supplies like sleeping bags, boots, coats, hats, and gloves. We are collecting hats, boots, coats, sleeping bags, and gloves, and we wanted to include our whole school in this giving back fundraiser because it follows our school motto, giving the one community pursuing greatness and getting better every day. Sub-Zero Mission is important to me because I want to give back to veterans after they sacrificed their lives to keep the earth safe. My dad, Kukhul, and his grandpa are all veterans, making this even more special. Our friend Angelo couldn't make it here tonight, but was motivated to help because he believes Sub-Zero Mission is a great organization. Thank you for inviting me to this meeting to share our plan.
Oh, wait, there's more.
We also invited our new technology teacher, Mrs. Mersak, and she... I'm going to let her say a few things about herself, but we're super excited to have her at Riverview this year. She's done amazing things already, and you know it's really great when the first week of school, all the teachers are coming to and saying, "Great job."
Well, thank you very much. My name is Sherry Mersak, and I'm very excited to join the Riverview staff as well as just Riverside in general. And I come with so many passions and so much excitement, and I love that I get to start a Girls Who Code club. I believe strongly in STEM and science, technology, and really just making an impact as women in this field that lacks a large woman population. And so, I'm really excited about that for 5th graders. I've been doing it for quite a while, and just to see over the year how the girls start very timid and shy when it comes to coding. By the end, they're putting on fantastic presentations, and we're really able to see us make an impact even in our community. So, we're looking forward to that this year at Riverside or Riverview and Melrose. So, thank you for having me.
And finally, this one. No, you can just hit the air. Here? Yep.
Look at that.
Riverview inspires us to be the best version of ourselves.
Hi, I'm Bethany Ward from Lake County Sheriff's Department. I am the SSO Officer out here at Riverview. I am so happy to be here because A, I love kids, and B, I love the teachers. So, I'm honored and just looking forward to a wonderful year.
Hi, we're the Riverview Lunch Ladies, and we just wanted to share with you how glad we are to be back feeding and seeing the children every day here at Riverview Elementary. I'm Beth.
Kathy.
Lisa.
Danielle.
And our husbands are exceptionally glad that we are back. Showing up at our door every other day. Now, we've got to get back to work.
Good morning, Riverview. We have some culture playbook rock stars to recognize this morning. Isaiah from Miss Kenyon's class for being a positive influence. Isaiah cheered on a fellow student which she worked really hard on her conscience.
Have a fantastic day, Riverview, and remember to do the right thing, be a positive influence, and be the best version of you.
Riverview is a great place to learn.
I am kind, I am smart, I give you what is, I am love, I am worthy.
Riverview is creative.
Riverview is beautiful.
Riverview is kind.
Riverview is inclusive.
Riverview has Riverside pride.
Riverview is generous.
Riverview is a community of martyrs.
Riverview is supportive.
I am so excited to be bringing fun at bat to Riverview Elementary School this year for all of our kindergarten through 5th grade students. The program was given to us by USA Baseball. Teachers across the country are implementing it into their gyms this year. The program emphasizes active playing, fundamental movement, character development. Most importantly, it emphasizes fun. Play ball!
Hi, my name is Sherry Mersak, and I'm very excited to bring Girls Who Code to Riverview. I wanted to be able to expose current 5th grade girls to the field of computer science because it is a field that does not have a lot of women in it, and Girls Who Code is a national organization that I love partnering with to bring it to our school.
Riverview is helpful.
Riverview is amazing because teams work well together.
Riverview is friendship.
Riverview is family.
It's finally quiet at Riverview.
Yeah.
It's tomorrow.
I'm saying what the kindergarten shirts go in my life.
They do, they do. Every spirit. Until they don't fit anymore.
Until they're like in fourth grade.
So, thank you for presenting. Appreciate it. And we do have from a worker who noticed it, there's a recognition for Graham, AJ, and Mrs. Mersak. Have you come up? We will present you. Take a quick version.
Thank you very much. Such a certificate recognition. Great job, and great speech, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, great job.
I want you guys smiling. You are freaks, aren't you? A little bit over. All right. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can somebody send an email to Melrose Riverside to tell us how we can help them?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Tom Heck to follow, and next up is a... Sorry.
Always happy to say that.
I know. Nutrition Services update. Some of the hardest working people that I know, one of my favorites, people's fed. Mrs. Gifford's going to give us the down button. The down button, the manager.
This is not very exciting after that. So, nutrition services falls under Board Policy 8500. The things that are encompassed within that policy include the appropriate claiming of reimbursable meals each month following Smart Snack guidelines. Those include things like items permitted to be sold during the school day, including fundraisers, which I know many of you do not appreciate, but we cannot sell candy bars during the school day. Making sure there are properly trained and certified staff members in each kitchen where meals are being served. All managers, some assistant cooks and I are certified, service tech certified, to be a person in charge in the kitchens. So, if someone were out, say, on campus, I could be considered that person in charge if the Health Department were to show up. Working with families of students with meal restrictions to make reasonable accommodations while staying within the meal pattern requirements. We have a lot of students in our district that have allergies, diabetes, celiac, various and the sundry things that we have to accommodate within school day for their meals. Managing food supply, labor costs to keep the program operating independently, and making sure all staff are trained properly on the proper components of the meals and things like that. So, this is the part Gary likes. This is the numbers part. From August of 2022 through June of 2023, our kitchen served... I can't read that, so I'm going to use my notes. 365,014 meals to students in eight buildings, including the two buildings in Fairport Harbor. This breaks down to 251,912 lunches, 8,484 breakfasts, and 104,618 severe need breakfasts. So, to break that down, those 8,484 breakfasts were only at Parkside because that is the only building in our district that does not qualify for severe need breakfast reimbursement. So, that gives us a higher reimbursement rate on those breakfasts except at Parkside. We had state and federal revenue of $934,000. We had district-wide sales of over $900,000. This would not surprise you if any of you stood in the John R. cafeteria during lunchtime because I've never seen kids buy chips and cookies and second lunches like the night for your sale. It is the highest-selling school kitchen in the district for snacks. Also includes catering within the district. That brought in about $18,000. Catering includes anything from staff meetings. It includes things like, you know, buying items for the concession stand for the band boosters for primary and football games, special events for students. We'll do special lunches for them, special breakfasts, and we always work them so they eat a reimbursable meal so we can claim them, but the kids get to maybe enjoy something different than they would going through the line. The bistro had sales of $3,844 and $25 cents. So, that is over 6,000 cookies, over 100 cups of coffee, and various other snacks and drinks. Those kids worked really hard in there. So, I think I've got a picture of them in the next couple of slides. This is our second year of being vet paid, reduced price, and free status for meals. Even though not all students are receiving their meals at no cost, there were some significant changes made to include more families this year that will also extend into next year. The direct certification process expanded this year to include Medicaid-eligible families. So, this increased the number of students that automatically qualify for benefits from about 550 to over 900. So, without filling out a single application, we almost doubled our families that will receive free meals this year. And actually, as a side note, at Fairport, that pushed them over the 40% threshold, which means next year I can apply for them to the community eligibility provision, so all of their meals will be at no cost. The second big change is that the state of Ohio is covering the cost of reduced-priced meals for this year and the 2024-25 school year. So, students that would qualify at that level would actually receive their meals at no cost. So, instead of a $0.30 breakfast and $0.40 lunch, theirs will be free as well. We did raise lunch prices slightly to compensate for continued price increases of food and supplies. Unfortunately, nothing is going down. So, looking ahead, the department has purchased two new combi ovens for Melrose Elementary. This involved a significant electrical upgrade, which the nutrition department did get for. These are scheduled to be installed October 13th, so that will not interfere with meal service, hopefully with a long weekend. We are changing out some old equipment at Buckeye and providing the kitchen with some more practical tools to help them in their daily processes. Fortunately, we were not able to have combi ovens installed in the Buckeye kitchen due to drain issues that would involve cutting into the floor. However, we are getting rid of the 150-year-old oven that doesn't work in their kitchen, bringing them in a small tube burner, removing their convection oven. Once all that's done, I'm actually going to look at purchasing a second oven right there for them.
All right. What is a combi oven?
So, a combi oven is a combination of baking and steaming, heating and steaming. So, the reason Melrose is taking two is because you can't bake and steam at the same time, but you can bake in one and steam in the other. So, if she's making, you know, chicken patties in one, she can be steaming broccoli in the other. So, it just is more efficient, and it takes way less time.
This is why you're just cooking chicken patties. Yay!
I was the green table.
Right. So, they're very efficient. We have one at Riverside, and we have one in John R. Ledgeville as well. So, I would like to update as many as I can while we have some excess funds in the buildings that we are able to do that. Obviously, they're also at Riverview and Parkside. And I'm still looking to purchase an additional vending machine for the John R. kitchen. Believe it or not, I'm having a really hard time finding suppliers of vending machines, so that's been a big issue. Next page. So, I have been working with the Student Services Department, specifically Annori Hamilton and Amanda Mills, to upgrade the Blue's Coffee Cart for this year. So, I gave them a laptop, a touchscreen laptop, and they can use a point-of-sale, install a bill of point-of-sale on there, put their specific items on there so they can teach the kids how to use that so when they make their transition up here and work in the bistro, it'll be pretty seamless. So, we're very excited about that. They take orders from the teachers from the beginning of the week, and then the kids process them, put them in bags, take them to them, take the money, the receipts, they'll be doing a deposit. So, that's kind of an exciting process. And just to finish off, behind the scenes, just some things that we do that may not... you might not be aware of. Our office processes hundreds of free reduced-price meal applications at the beginning of the year. Once those are complete, we begin the process of waiving instructional fees for those that return their waiver, getting us permission to do so. And I bring this up because we allow phone calls with everybody the first couple of weeks of school, and I will tell you, my assistant is diligently processing applications like all day long for the first couple of weeks of school, when we come back through the first couple of weeks of school. We have about 1,800 students that qualify total, so with the 900 that were automatic, that process just keeps coming. And then we get, you know, we get calls from parents by the second week of school asking why their fees aren't waived. So, sometimes it takes a little while for us to get through that stack, but it does happen. Our kitchen managers have extensive regulations they need to follow when preparing and serving meals. Sometimes they think, you know, people look and they're like, "Oh, they're lunch ladies." You know, they come in every day, they throw stuff in the oven, and, you know, it's not that difficult. They have to be compliant with the components we offer, the type of vegetables they serve, the sodium content, and the calorie count for each day and for the week as a whole. They get continuous training throughout the year on regulations and changes that may be coming, and can even earn extra certification levels based on completed training. And I wanted to mention, currently do have one individual... I didn't realize this price. ...within the department that has achieved a Level 2 certification with the School Nutrition Association, and that individual is Mary Manner, the manager at the high school. She did that all on her own time. There is no pay increase for that. There is no, you know, bump in position for that. It's just something that she did, you know, so she could gain more knowledge and be better at her job. And then I will leave you with all food supplies, payroll, benefits, and training are paid out of the nutrition fund, which is comprised of federal and state reimbursements, sales of food and catering. We do not take any monies from the general fund to manage our program.
I would like to remind the public, like, we have permanent appropriations on the agenda tonight, and the Food Service Fund is being appropriated $2.18 million. And again, that's basically being generated from their own revenues, and they don't take money from the general fund, and they've done that for years and years. And so, all those improvements that Mrs. Gifford... And so all those improvements that, that Mrs. Gifford has talked about putting into their kitchens, the ovens, the equipment, they fund all of that themselves. It's something this district should be really proud of.
Absolutely.
As I understand it, that's not typical of school districts. Typically, it's a, it's funded in part by the district itself, so definitely hats off.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I would also like to mention, um, Mrs. Gifford's staff. I know they were highlighted in the River View elementary a little bit, but these, these, these people who were there at the beginning, they're always have a smile on their face in dealing with the kids when they first come in those, and, and they're just amazing and they go above and beyond like, like all of our, all our staff, but they just, they just do great things every day for kids and they are kids-first, um, staff and organization that comes from, from the top down.
Thank you.
And that, that's my special report.
All right, that brings us to discussion of old business. There was nothing submitted prior to the meeting in the old business. All right, that brings us to new business then. And again, there was nothing submitted prior to the meeting. Um, I know Mrs. Gross, you mentioned the OSBA.
Yeah, but we don't have to do it.
We're gonna do it next month. All right. Um, that brings us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First up is the Superintendent Business Advisory. Um, we did have a business advisory meeting, um, earlier this month. The meeting really focused on, um, Dr. Rotino kind of introducing himself and Mr. Hall and, um, the businesses, um, getting them back into the process of kind of giving input on, um, kind of what they're looking for. We're gonna continue to work on that profile of a student with them. Um, this is Dr. Malakar, she did present some of the, um, experiences that we have with Painsville City and some of the new things that they're working on from a curricular standpoint. I did ask Dr. Rotino if we could bring that into a meeting at some point, so there'll be more of an updated detail, um, because I think it's something great to share with the entire board and the community. So more to come on that. Um, I know Dr. Vassich also sat in on the meeting. He's gonna continue to help us and stay engaged since he's kind of ran that business advisory council for so long. So, um, all in all, great meeting, um, starting to set goals and think about what the future looks like for the team. So I don't know if you guys would have anything to add?
I, I thought it was a great opportunity to meet, um, you know, local businesses as well and looking forward to expanding that committee and kind of working with them closely as well as bringing Dr. Malakar, her presentation, which she did yesterday in front of other schools and rocked, um, in her words.
I mean, it's supposed to say that in front of everyone.
Sure.
That's what I said while you were home last night.
As, as well, I got to present her presentation, um, yesterday for Eastern Lake County Chamber of Commerce in the Florida Seals Room, so.
I think we're doing a lot of great things there, so I, I can't wait for her to come to the board so you guys can see that she presented too, so.
I felt the businesses were really engaged this year too. That was super exciting, like, everybody just wants to be a part of what we're doing and it's a great feeling. You know what I mean? It's just nice to sit around the table and have that, so I thought that was really cool. That was fun for me.
Dr. Vassich, do you have anything else? You're good, Dr.? Great, so that brings us to Curriculum and Programming Committee and the Alumni Association Liaison, Mr. Fishel.
Unfortunately, there were, um, a few people that were not able to attend the Alumni Association Meeting, therefore there wasn't one this month. Uh, that being said, October fourth is the Hall of Fame Dinner and I believe Superintendent Rotino is scheduled to attend.
Yes, I am.
As probably some others in this room. And so, um, that will be at the Holiday Inn and think that it opens at five-thirty and dinner is at six-thirty. So there is somewhat of a deadline.
It's the fourteenth.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it didn't sound like, yeah.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Thank you, thank you. So, uh, fourteenth, uh, which is a Saturday and opens at five-thirty and dinner's at six-thirty and they're really looking to have a head count like real soon, like maybe by tomorrow.
I think today was a good one.
Yeah, and, and so I think that there's been special dispensation to allow for tomorrow. So, so anyway, um, yeah, so anyway, that's, that's kind of a big deal. Uh, I was able to attend one a couple of years ago and it was very well done and I believe, um, Madam President, you attended last year, no?
Uh, two years ago I was.
Two years ago you did, okay.
I attended last year and I'll attend this year as well.
Okay, very good, so, uh, look forward to that. All right, so for curriculum, um, we discussed some exciting opportunities that are coming about and, um, one of them was the Painsville, Painsville Township Fire and EMS are going to have several informational and training sessions for the Riverside Little School District, mostly for seniors. And also there is for seniors, an anatomy and physiology opportunity, which can earn up to six credentials. And that's going to be with, um, University Hospital's TriPoint and the program, uh, will provide students with a range of speakers and then also a chance to visit, uh, multiple departments in the hospital and ultimately choose the opportunity to select one department to complete a long-term, work-based learning experience. Very exciting as we move to expose students to more opportunities rather than just go to college, right? Maybe get trained in certain things and not have a mountain of college debt and actually have a career with, um, learning opportunities at a younger age. I know this is only seniors right now, but the possibility of opening it up further to juniors in the future. And so we discussed that. So, um, there is state report card information and, um, the, um, Board and Superintendent, I believe, has set up a, a work session to go ahead and review all of that to formulate a plan. I have, as a curriculum chair, been asking for and looking for a program, uh, to increase our, our, our scoring and, and my, I have really dialed into, to math and so I think we have an opportunity to make a lot of progress there and so we're, we're gonna start to analyze, uh, what we have and hopefully create, uh, a more aggressive program to improve our scoring in the district. And Curriculum Director Malakar, would you like to add anything else?
I think we've got it pretty covered this time.
Yeah, and if I could, that, that, uh, meeting to renew the scores is gonna be on October tenth. It is in the morning, it is hard to get us all together, uh, but it's a seven-thirty, uh, AM and I suspect it'll be in the, in the board room down the way if anybody's interested in attendance.
And that's it? Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison, Mr. Hack.
Sure. Um, so we covered, uh, a number of things, uh, in, in the Buildings and Grounds, um, kind of keeping to a, to a higher level. Um, we did get an update on the modular unit that will be going into Buckeye. Um, and at that point, which is almost two weeks ago, we are on course and speed to have that installed in the, uh, November timeframe. And Mr. Oleskis, is that still what we're looking at?
Yes, it is.
Terrific. So I, I know that the Buckeye is, is crowded, but the, the extra unit will hopefully, will definitely alleviate some of that crowding and, and make things better at the Buckeye. Looking at the future, we are looking also at, uh, doing an assessment of the slate roof at, at the, at the campus, uh, trying to figure out what's the best way forward with that to preserve it and keep it in, in place for, uh, for the future. Another thing, many of you are aware that Riverside, we really have become, uh, the reputation of Riverside has really improved, or not improved, but has, has gone up. And we had the, the cross country, for example, we had the, the cross-country meets back in September where I understand we had twelve thousand athletes, uh, here at Riverside, um, which is really impressive, but the, the one thing that it did is it put a strain on our infrastructure a bit, so we are looking to, uh, put a, uh, increase the capabilities of the, uh, field house to handle the amount of, of, uh, service that's needed when you have twelve thousand people here, uh, and other things. So that, that is really, uh, again, looking at the future and trying to, to build upon the, uh, build on the trajectory that we are on. The vestibule project, we've been talking about that for a long time. We'll be able to do some work in some of the buildings, but most of that work is gonna be, uh, occur in next summer, so hopefully when the school starts next year, the improved and more secure vestibules in all the schools will be in place. And, uh, we're, we're gonna be replacing the lights at the stadium as well. Um, unfortunately, the way those lights work, they all kind of fade out at the same time, so we have to replace them all at the same time at different luminosities. So, uh, not a huge amount of money, but it is, uh, something that we're doing again just to, to maintain the capabilities of, of the district. We also are looking and talking about, uh, doing significant work on the track next year. Uh, it has to be done next summer, but our, our track has been in place for, for many years and it needs to frankly be replaced and that would include taking up the existing, um, rubber composite that the track is made of, doing some grinding of the asphalt base and then, and then reapplying to new asphalt base as well as a new, uh, rubber surface for the track itself. If you've been listening in on, you know, the last few months, uh, the, the big thing that we have coming up, I think, is the, uh, how we're going to tackle the improvement of the infrastructure of the buildings. And, uh, we've been talking about a company called Bylofsky, which is doing, uh, a lot of work assessments to help us prioritize the work that will be done. And Mr. Plackler during his report will give us an update on when those reports will, will be available, but again, that's, that is truly, I think, the, the key to ensuring a strong future for Riverside. As far as the liaison report goes, I, I will, uh, present next month, the, uh, any platform, uh, OSBA platform, uh, proposals that will be proposed at the, um, at the Capitol Conference in November and we'll put on that as a board and then I have been elected as the, I wasn't elected, I was, I was the one who raised my hand. I hope to be the representative for Riverside at the, at that, uh, Capitol Conference and, and we'll vote according to, to what the board says, but we'll, we'll get that information uh, next month and vote on it and, and move forward, but that's my report.
Thank you. That brings us to Policy Committee, Booster Organization Liaison.
We've not had policy, another policy committee meeting since, um, our last Booster Organizations. Um, this past Monday was the RP TA meeting. I was in Grand Rapids, Michigan, so I was not able to attend. Mr. Carebine, are you able to look at?
Yeah, they, uh, set the Easter, the community-wide Easter egg hunt, um, for Saturday, March Um, and they're working on, uh, all contributing to a shared, uh, calendar, so they all have access to each other's events to try to not schedule, you know, different things on the same days at other schools. So I believe, um, the move, uh, the woman from the move, Monica, was gonna set up a, a shared calendar for the PTAs.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
That brings us to our update from the superintendent.
All right. So, uh, Mr. Mag, Mr. Fishel saw my thunder a little bit, but, uh, the state report card did come out for twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, this year included a first-time overall rating, uh, as a district. Uh, we were rated three and a half stars, uh, which mean we are deemed to meet the expectations as opposed to the state. Uh, the individual categories, which we will, did take a deep dive into on the morning of the tenth, um, and we will record that and place it on the website as well along with the slides we present. Um, it's important to know kind of how we're rated and what each of these ratings look like, but, uh, I would, our scores overall are pretty similar to where they are last year in terms of overall rating, although we do notice improvement within the subsets of the scores. We dive into the individual scores that come there, we did see some growth. So then for achievement, for example, um, our, which achievement is based on PI, which is every single test, our PI level did raise, but that still fell within the four-star, uh, rating overall. So we are four out of five stars of achievement. Progress is there, we need to look at and make some, make some gains in. Uh, our progress was two stars out of five and that says we are below what the growth expectations are. Uh, we're taking a little, we're taking a deeper dive into that, but that's one of those where Ohio uses a third-party vendor, um, called Evas or Soss Evas out of North Carolina and that, those actual scores that go into that are not released and they will not be released until, uh, the sixteenth of next month. So when those come out, we'll take a real deep dive into those and kind of just close diagnosis into all that. Gap closing is our, is looking at specific achievement groups and progress on the subgroups. We were four out of five stars, uh, where that ranges. Graduation rate, uh, as a note, this is not the class of twenty-three, this recognizes a class of twenty-two and then the class of twenty-twenty-one. So it's a year in the rear and we were four stars on that graduation rate, um, right there. Uh, early literacy is the third grade guarantee. We were four stars the previous year, we are three stars this year, to be honest. Uh, this comes from the beginning of the school year last year in twenty-one compared to the year twenty-twenty. Uh, at that time of the beginning of the school year, we were going through some EMIS transitions and our EMIS coordinator, our EMIS was done through LGCA and that person that kind of left, and my understanding is some reporting didn't occur as it should, so this is actually not an accurate reflection of our scores. Uh, we are working to make sure we correct that and that does not happen again, uh, so that, that rate has to be in flux, uh, where we work, um, for the years moving forward. So that's what we know. And then college career workforce readiness is not yet rated. It may be rated next year, it may be the year after, they're not really sure because they don't know how they're gonna rate it yet. So it's one of the things that the state's work on, how they can get a miracle figure from that. So, uh, October tenth at seven-thirty, we are in the board, um, board conference room. Uh, we'll get into a real deep dive for about an hour, uh, into what it's all made of. It's really, uh, it'd be great in the morning, bring your coffee because you're gonna need something to keep you awake because we're getting a new shot of it, but, um, really excited about kind of sharing that with everybody to make sure that we're all, what the, what the measures are, how we can move in and kind of, some of our, our strategies to, um, always show continuous improvement and eventually hit that five-star rate that is our goal. So next up, um, in, in a comprehensive piece that's accompanying to the report card is our quality profile. We released that to the community on September nineteenth. This year it was built in-house by Mr. Carebine. It's a fantastic three-floor reference, you have one in your pocket. Um, we are actually building a home as well. Really great, um, great document that kind of shows all the great things that are, that are, that is happening in Riverside. Uh, it's something we're proud to share and give to community members as they come in as well, um, to hand out. So that's our quality profile. And again, uh, you know, Mr. Carebine did a wonderful job putting it together and really did, uh, worth, worth your time taking a read. This week, our last week's homecoming, so as part of homecoming is always a community parade, pep rally, uh, and the football game. So, uh, great times to get out, you know, if you walk through the parade, uh, we had a bus kind of follow us that did, uh, it's already over, so I'm real happy for that. Also on the bus was an advertisement for more drivers, really for more, always looking for more drivers, we did have that in front of us, but kind of getting all the whole entire community together, um, kind of round our great day, uh, great evening, great weather and then obviously the football game, uh, great win for our football team as well, who are still undefeated. Um, so great things to see that. Uh, alumni events that are homecoming, that's when we can see kind of all the people come back and do some of that. Chalk Festival, our, our art students came out, they, they didn't chalk it up. Unfortunately, we had some rain today, so it kind of washed it away, uh, but it, it was really neat to come in and see, um, all the artwork from our students as you walk in, um, so you're in the buy office and the balloons on the upper, on the upper left there are the entrance into the, into the board office from the back. And it's, it is, it just lifts your spirits in the morning, you walk in, see all the bright colors. They are, they have sense of pathway with the rain, but it's a, it's great for our students too. Uh, Community Food Drive. So, uh, I think Sides started this, but it can't, was it Sides?
It was Sides, Student Council.
Okay.
And, um, NHS.
So kind of a combined effort to raise, uh, NCC power and hunger, uh, Community Food Drive. We, um, did a phenomenal job, a forty boxes full of food items collected, the library was packed with that, a lot of other initiatives that they do, but, um, all of those were collected between, uh, for three days. So kind of took care of some of that and it's a, just, again, another example of how Riverside is back and connects the community. Have an update on that coffee with Chris, I hate that name, but that's what we have it. Kind of the meeting that we had throughout, we've had three informal coffee meetings so far and we've got three more to go. The attendance at those has kind of continued to increase every time, uh, with the last one being at Riverview. Uh, three more, uh, October eleventh is at Buckeye, the twenty-third at the campus and then the, we ended at Parkside on the thirtieth, so our kind of fish is up this month. But those have been great, come on out if you haven't been to one. It's really informal, give a little bit of my, my history, we kind of ask questions and we get to meet community members and they, they last about an hour, I think, is kind of what we do. And, um, J.K. Wayes pulled in, I, I hope he saw the sign. Um, we did pass a resolution and the sign is up as well as, uh, right on the corner there and it's really kind of neat to see. Uh, I did show that with Dr. Payless along with the picture he's seen as well and, uh, he'll tell you he doesn't like it, but I think deep down he really does. Kind of a real neat thing to see.
He'll get used to it.
He will. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Treasures Report Committee update, so finance and audit and personnel committee and strategic plan liaison, Mrs. Grossi.
Sure, we had a finance and personnel committee meeting on the twenty-first in eight fifteen. We
We always start our meetings with the personnel, Mallory wasn't there, so Mr. Placko did a fine job filling in for you. And talk, we, we have, yes, I know. We have hired a payroll person here in our district, so we have finally been able to fill that position.
He wants, he won once.
So that, that's good for our finance department. We have been filling some of our bus driver positions and with some of the things that we did in recognizing their contributions, they are coming back. So we're, we're doing a little bit better there, we're still looking. We discussed the handbooks, I believe those are on the agenda this evening. So we have two administrative, the administrative and the exempt handbooks that are being voted on here, and those changes that were in there were just to match language that we have already discussed as a board and approved, and we just had to update the policy handbooks or the administrative handbooks in order to match that. And then we also added one board's office secretary and moved them from a, to a 12-month position instead of a 10-month position in the central office. So that was in the exempt handbook. So that's on the agenda this evening. We did talk about our cash balance, and that while the five-year forecast indicates that our district currently is in a good financial position, we also put into place last year a policy that said that we would start looking and discussing levies and the need for funding or what we are going to be doing about the timing of those things when we start to run out of cash and start deficit spending. And so we want to have 90 days' worth of cash available and on hand at all times, and so when we start dipping below that at the end of the year with the five-year forecast, we will start to talk about that. And so that is going to be something that we should be focusing on when we hit the five-year forecast conversation in November. It will be upon us soon, and our policy in board handbooks is that we should be looking at that two years in advance, so whatever that happens to be. Just so that we, as a community, can start to recognize that we are having, you know, that we're going to be coming into that timing. We talked about some of the things that we're doing for teacher training, science of reading, we talked about grow your own teacher scholarship, we talked about some free tutoring services that are available. We have the permanent appropriations on our agenda this evening, which I'm sure Mr. Placko can review in further detail, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the appropriations that we make are actually our approval. It's the board giving the district the approval to actually spend the dollars that we receive. And while, while we focus clearly on the five-year forecast, that only encompasses the general fund and, which fund is it?
The joint financing district.
The joint financing district, which is another, it's, it's Fund 030 on your form here that we all have in our packet, but while those funds amount to 50, 52, $53 million, there is over $66 million that we are actually giving the district approval to spend. So there is a lot more funding that goes on other than just the general fund. I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. Take some time to review this, it's informative. And then we also talked about the new copier vendor, but I'm going to allow you to elaborate on when we get to your report. We have, we are selecting new copiers and some, maybe some improvements which with how teachers and staff and people making copies and sending things to printers. There are a couple of grants out there that we will be applying for, we may have already applied, been applying for. So there's, there's a couple of safety grants through the Bureau of Workers' Comp. I already got ours, actually, just as an FYI. That's all I have. We can throw a lot of things. So that's all I have for that. As far as the strategic plan update, I don't have anything at this time. We're continuing to work on things, and you can see what we're doing throughout the district. And Mr. Retino, I really appreciate the fact that when you send out the board updates that you reference what portion of the strategic plan you're giving us information on, so that's appreciated. That's all I have.
Great. So that brings us to an update from the Treasurer. Mr. Placko.
We'll get the update on the copier vendor change, how we go with the slides. So we've worked with a long-time vendor, looking at options for going forward, and so the IT department is ready to throw out different copier vendors, see what's out there. We received three different proposals, plus one from our current vendor, looking at getting new copiers that are higher capacity, faster, also more secure than what we have currently. And so we received those proposals and changed vendors to a new vendor. We're starting with Buckeye, Melridge, River View, LaMouth, and the central office, and we'll save Parkside and the entire campus probably for this coming summer. Results of cost saving, getting all new copiers in all those buildings, and looking at one high-speed color copier for each office in each building with high capacity, and then regular black and white copiers throughout the other teacher lounges, areas in the buildings, and going to a badge system where instead of having to have tech installing different copiers in which copy I'm printing to, it's a central copier you print to, and you have a badge, you look to any copier in the district that has the system, and you can print it out right then and there. People aren't printing things and leaving and forgetting about them, or going to the copier, much a job to run at once and having to wait to get their prints. So it'll be a nice cost savings as well, and so we're excited to get that moving forward. So going into the slides tonight, we have a few updates just on our August financial report. The board approves the monthly financial report each month as part of the agenda. We put these monthly reports both in board docs and on the treasurer's page on the website. Our total cash balance of all funds is $51,240,000. Typically, August is our highest cash month of the year because we get our property tax settlements in August. General fund for August is $32.8 million. Our permanent improvement fund currently has $8.4 million that's unencumbered, that's not already committed, but we've got accounted for the best fuel projects, where we have around close to $7 million that's uncommitted, unencumbered at this point. The appropriations and revenue estimates do not get displayed on the financial reports till September because we're approving them this month. The next month will be a little more better reported review because right now we're in month two of the fiscal year, fiscal year 2024, so those months don't display going forward, starting September, bill review, our progress, revenue estimates, and corporate Some general fund statistics, our revenue for August was just shy $7.4 million, which includes about $5 million in property tax revenue, you know, class one, class two residential commercial, and then $1.4 million in public utility tax. We also received $141,000 in casino tax. We get those settlements twice a year in August and January each year. The expenditures for August were $4.2 million. With the cash balance, we have none to have right now, we're earning some good interest. So August alone was just over $100,000 in interest just for the general fund. We're getting a churn in Star of Ohio, which is we're keeping majority of cash at 5.52% which hasn't been like that for many, many, many years. And then the, in our investment account, we're averaging 3% right now. Those are, those aren't like stock investments, those are long-term bonds, things like that, local paper, CDs, and those type of things. So some of those were locked in at lower interest rates before interest rates shot up, so that's why the overall yield is a little lower, but we'll turn around as those things mature. So our overall yield is 4.74%. So going into permanent appropriations, the board is required to adopt permanent appropriations on or before August 1st of each year. So we typically do what's called a temporary appropriation in June to start the fiscal year, and then we finalize those in September, so we have more data, have more accurate numbers, especially like our federal grant funds. Once it's approved by the board, they can send to the county auditor's office. We appropriate at what's called the legal control at the fund level. So you'll see on the next slide, we basically approve a dollar amount per fund. We don't, we're approving more detail in that. You could go deeper into what's called fund, fund function or fund function object level. What that means is, like, for example, our budget, you know, each building has a discretionary budget. Well, if a building decides to spend $1,000 more in structural supplies versus office supplies, that budget change required, it has to connect with board approval. Only having, you know, orbitings every so often, that doesn't help us with efficiency, so we do it at the fund level. But also at the same time, you know, the board also approves all personnel, they approved union contracts, they approved handbooks, so the board's already approving majority of expenditures through salary and benefits, and they also approve any purchase over $15,000. So that's kind of the other way that we're still reviewing most financial transactions anyways, just not in detailed budget format as far as for order adoption, if that makes sense. We currently have 24 active funds that we budget for. There's 162, what we call special cost centers, those are almost like sub-funds within funds, so there's separate cash balances you get accounted for, so things like different athletic funds, different grant funds, student activity funds, student council, honor society, there's a whole bunch of ones that go into that. We basically account for 456 different revenue accounts and 2,375 budget accounts all go into appropriations. So this slide here kind of has majority of our funds, we call them kind of our local funds. You can see the general fund appropriation is $50.5 million, that's about 76.31% of our total appropriations. Like Fund Two, which is our bond retirement fund, $1.7 million, that's where the funds from the levy to build Parkside, River View go into, and that name has come out of there. Some of the other larger funds, we already talked about food service, $2,180,000, that's about 3% of our appropriations. Fund 030, the financing district, Mrs. Grassi spoke to already, that's, we kind of included in our five-year forecast. Permanent improvement fund, I have $4.3 million appropriated there. That one's more, is the rough estimate, because we don't know for sure what projects we'll be doing after the Byloski reports, and if that will even start in this fiscal year. So that's kind of the estimate for that. So total of these local funds makes about 96% of our appropriations, or $63.6 million. There's some additional funds here. One size about schools, two I've got to mention, is all schools use the same fund numbers basically for their accounting. So, you know, Fund 01 is general fund for basically all the school districts in Ohio. The 400 funds, we have two state grant funds, $34,000, 0.05%, but probably have increased that as we rewarded those safety grants that Mrs. Grassi spoke about, adjust accordingly. Then the 500 funds are our federal grant funds, so we have about $192,000 of asset funding left from the COVID relief funds, and then our other typical special, you know, special education funds, limited English proficiency, target assistance, early childhood, things like that. And then the $400,000 grant fund, that's the safety grant for the best fuels, part of that. So our total federal funds, $2.5 million. That number also is divided because as we finalize our final expenditure reports for our federal grants this September 30th, we'll have some over money that will come to us, so we'll probably up those in a later month. So our total appropriations for all funds is just over $66 million.
Mr. Placko on the other page. The booths are responding, and we said, like, again, we're cooperating, like, but they are kind of self-stating, and I believe our Latchkey is also right.
Yes, Latchkey is also self-stating.
Are there any other funds on the, those are the two that I remember, I just was kind of curious if there was anything else we were on.
Yeah, I mean, they're, you know.
Those are the two that really earn money.
Those are the two that really, they're more like business, they call them business-type business activity funds, so yes. Some of the other funds, for example, termination benefits fund, that's a fund that we pay severance payments out of, so we transfer funds from the general fund to the fund head. So those, that's not really a self-sustaining fund, but it's a way to still account for severances and things like that, and try to level out expenditures. And then like Fund 300 includes the athletic fund, so obviously they're collecting money for tickets, but we also transfer $75,000 a year there to help support.
Thank you.
Any other questions on appropriations? Just a few other quick updates. The Byloski facility condition assessments I got today, they are hoping to have Melridge, they're targeting to have that finished on October 6th, it's just Friday, and then they'll have the other three reports done, they're targeting October 18th. I told them about like the timing, because I'm actually taking a vacation between there, so I'm like, you know, your timing's good, and so we'll have that in October, we'll be starting, we probably have a little session, most of the cameras, for the group to discuss, and hoping to have them come out and kind of walk us through the findings. We, if you remember earlier this year, the summer, we contracted TDA to do a study on our baseball and softball fields, look at what potential improvements would be, whether that includes upgrading the grass field, putting in turf, putting in turf infield, doing a whole new multipurpose field, kind of what, what that all looks like, what that table recommendations are. We have a draft in that report, so, so working on reviewing that, and of course, we finalize that, and we'll share it with the board. For the best fuel projects, we met on September 8th, glazing contractor, we also met on the 15th of September to look at a couple of changes at LaMouth, additional window by the front office that would make sense to replace with the best fuels, it's all hazed up and condensation and all stuff, and visibility's not good there, so we're looking to change over for that. And there was an entrance walk required from that, we did not include the scope, which we're looking at including that as well, because it's a glass door, glass windows right there, so we're, we got a price on that. And then we also discovered there was an error among the drawings where the doors was reflected as a two-story door, and it's only one story, so we'll be a credit back to us on that, on that piece of it. We met with, we also met today with the architect and contractor just for our monthly update. They're working on putting a schedule together, but likely because of door hardware, they might not have that in time, so the work might, they might do Melridge over spring break with the rest happening in the summer. So more updated, they're trying to see if they can get the door hardware in earlier to do something in the quarter break, but we'll kind of address that and get closer. We also met with TDA on September 20th to talk about the track replacement that Mr. Heck spoke about. They came out and looked at track. We suspected the asphalt needs grounded down and replaced as well, so they came out and looked at that. The cost estimate for that project is around $600,000, which was a little higher than I was expecting. They also looked at the field house as far as with the sanitation line issue, and they just went, ooh, this space down where the thing runs under the parking lot, and the fuel tanks towards the transportation garage, and like, you know, a tricky thing, but tackled as well, we wanted that. So we're just kind of starting to have this conversation, see what that looks like. And also talked about if we do a track replacement project, what that looks like as far as timeline, because the old mill starts to last for graduation, and my understanding is once they remove the surface and grind it down and pour the asphalt, they have to wait 30 days before they can put the track surface on top of that, which gets you into August football season, start of the school year, and logistics of that. So it's like, if you move it forward between graduation across the track season, it's tricky thing to manage, but obviously at some point all schools deal with that when they have to prepare. And then lastly, I'm excited to give an update on the kilns at Parkside and River View. As we know, that's been a ongoing challenge. The kilns were finally installed last school year, but we needed to pay the invoice so we can close out the project with the facilities construction commission. So we actually finally paid the invoice today after months of trying to pay the vendor, which is not how we do things, we're not begging the vendor to give us the invoice, we can pay them if you see the other way around. So I did a little quick, I didn't spell that right when I'm doing this, but you can do that real quick. We passed the bond issue on November 8, 2016. We opened the schools on September 3, 2019, that's 1,029 days from the point the bond issue passed to designing the building, the school. And it took us 1,486 days to get the kilns installed, and our total was 2,515.
That's a lot of applause.
So one more kiln project. Eight-two, and that's okay.
All right, that brings us to Public.
Me, too, and that's okay.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the board president. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone wanting to?
Brian Massey, eighty-one ninety-six Severnacle Drive in Concord. I'd like to publicly thank Dr. Rotino for meeting with me and under this very busy schedule to discuss the performance scores that has me concerned. And we specifically talked about the third grade reading and also the math scores. What I have found out, that there's something going on in the math education. It's not just in the Riverside District, but Kirkland is the outlier. But the other eight school districts in Lake County, they have math scores, especially the middle school scores. There's something wrong. But I appreciate Dr. Rotino meeting with me, and I look forward to that upcoming meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to participate?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on the students at River View, the way they're giving back the project that they're talking about, Sub-Zero Mission. I had a chance to go to a meeting there and learn about their important work and discover that there was a former Riverside graduate, I actually had him at Hale Road in sixth grade, that passed away, his name is Danny Jones. And in honor of him, they're going to be doing a turkey giveaway dinner. And that's going to be on November eighteenth from eleven to four. So if anyone wants to donate to that project, or if they would like to help, they're looking for people.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to participate? Yes, sir.
Chris Alon. I live in Paineville Township. I think what I wanted, I've been coming to a lot of these meetings over the last couple of years and haven't spoken in a while. So I just wanted to talk before the next election cycle and just, again, let folks on the board know and the community that there's, you know, the latest kind of paranoia or conspiracy theory kind of thing going on is that parents don't have any rights in education. And I don't understand that I'm a parent and I have all kinds of rights to educate my child, children, and have a say in what they learn as well. So I don't, I think I did some math, and it's something like only fifteen percent of even the school year time, the kids are in school. Their other eighty-five percent is they're at home or doing something else that the parents have a hundred percent control over. And the fifteen percent here, they have all the say in the world in terms of what their kids are learning or not learning. So I don't, we just seem to be, and I hate to be negative, I apologize, but we've had this world of, hey, CRT is the problem, social emotional learning is the problem. We're trying to turn all of our kids communist or something like that. It's just not true. They're boogeyman conspiracy kind of things. We have folks who believe, you know, on our board who have talked about the fact that, you know, misogyny, we shouldn't teach that that's a bad thing, that misogyny is a bad thing. We have folks who think that Google is trying to infiltrate our schools and spy on our kids and that trying to bias the whole world against, you know, somebody. So these kind of things just aren't what school boards should be about. I think you guys talked about it at the beginning during the working session around how you're supposed to be a kind of sounding board for the school, trying to give feedback on what's going well, what might need to improve, that kind of thing. It shouldn't be a, every, you know, indoctrination fest, which is what everybody seems to be, not everybody, but lots of people seem to be concerned about. So, and the last thing on indoctrination, there's no such thing as indoctrination of kids, okay? They are what they are, or they're not. We can't indoctrinate them through an education process. So I think that was, so, and I don't, right now, we have elections coming up, and I think, you know, the most, whatever, inflammatory comments typically, or kind of advertisement are the people who get the votes, unfortunately. So I'm hoping that, you know, common sense or just kind of calmness takes over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you. That brings us to our consent agendas. So the first one on is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, item A through L. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on any of these items?
I do just on items F, G, M, I, and J. And I had talked to Mrs. Lanning beforehand. I just, if you could kind of run through what those items are for so that I have a better understanding and maybe people in the room have a better understanding as well.
So, and I'm sorry, I apologize, you kind of ran through some...
Was I too fast? So crossroads, crossroads, annual entries?
And I, I can certainly speak to.
Okay.
So do you want to do that individually, or just?
Just a ten thousand foot level.
So these are agencies and your educational facilities that we contract with to provide services for our students. I could give you more specifics, but...
Approximately, do you have, understand how much, approximately how much we spend?
Off the top of my head, I agree that. For example, crossroads, we utilize not only for services of students that we place in their partial hospitalization program, but they also provide counseling to our districts. They're only currently now at Parkside because we also partner, if you recall, with Signature Health. So we use those two agencies for the counseling services of students in our district, Crossroads and Signature Health. Reeducation Aspire, they provide alternative educational programming to our students who have pretty significant social, emotional, and behavioral challenges. And then there are other programs at Access, and that's for students who have autism. So we only send students to facilities outside the district when we can't leave their names here in Riverside. Emmanuel is a transportation company that we contract with to provide services to, also, to get students from, to and from their educational placement. I could give you more specifics in terms of the overall cost. Obviously, that varies from year to year based on the number of students that we have accessing services from the agency.
So it sounds like we kind of have a fee structure, and then depending on the usage, we pay according to the fee, but it's not a set amount? More or less?
There's usually typically a set amount for tuition when we're placing students in those facilities that are providing the educational component. Then, of course, transportation is on top of that. And that does kind of, I mean, from year to year, that can go, that obviously, like everything else, the tuition rates increase, you know, from year to year. But I could get that information and the number of students we have in each facility for you, if you would like.
No, that's fine. I just appreciate the background and the information.
Most of those services are paid for out of our special education grants, are they not?
It depends. It depends on generals and finances.
Depends on the service? I probably need to mention that we primarily use these agencies for special education students, but there are certain circumstances where also we access services for our general education students as well.
Does anyone have any other questions or?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, Mr. Clacko, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Gusskey.
Aye.
Lynn Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to personnel.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through I, including the amendment to item G.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any discussion on those items? All right, we'll hear none. Can we call the roll, please?
Lori Gusskey.
Aye.
Lynn Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to consent agenda for curriculum and programming.
Take a motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through E.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we take the roll?
Lynn Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Gusskey.
Aye. Motion carried. That brings us buildings and grounds and operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda, items A and B, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we call the roll, please?
Scott Fishel. Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Gusskey.
Aye.
Lynn Gracy.
Aye. Motion carried. And that brings us to Board of Education updates.
Two. So I just want to let the public be aware that we just approved the course of study for the English language arts, which we had approved the math curriculum previously in another meeting. And we've just now approved the English language arts. So thank you for that.
So this one is coming down the pike.
It's so much work that our staff puts into that. And the second thing that I wanted to mention was that I know that there was some information that in the state budget, the governor had wanted to, legislature had approved to overhaul the Ohio Department of Education. And seven of the Ohio Board of Education members have now sued the state of Ohio, and a federal court, or a circuit court in Franklin County has given them a preliminary injunction to block the... To, yeah, to block that from taking place. And so until that can be resolved, I'm assuming, I would like to get an update from Dan, I think. I'm assuming that none of those changes will take place because they were supposed to be slated to take place October third, if I'm not mistaken. I just thought I would tell them about that. Interesting to me.
Would you like to do just Mr. McIntyre, or do you want me to do that?
I will definitely do that. All right, just wanted to make sure. Sure. Any other updates?
I will let you guys know that I did take a bus ride out of Oklahoma. Sure. I did have somebody from the transportation department reach out and say, hey, why don't you take a bus ride and see what our drivers had?
Why don't you drive a bus?
No, no. I did take a ride. I almost had to be removed from the bus to make room for kids. I was going to be left on the side of the street. No, no. It was amazing. It was an elementary run, and it was two and a half. Because of being short, we did, he did two and a half routes that day. So there are a lot of kids on the bus. And actually, a little kid that came up and he asked if he could sit with me. So five minutes on the bus, the bus driver was like, please sit down, please sit down, please sit down, you know? And he came up and he said, can I sit with you so I don't get in trouble any longer? And I was like, sure. And I, within two minutes, I heard, please sit down. I was like, okay.
Was that you?
No, it wasn't me. It wasn't me. But, and then I had another little, a student asked me, she goes, you're so old. And I was like, whoa. It wasn't too bad. And then she looked at me, she goes, you're riding a bus and you're so old. I'm like, okay, I get it now. So I kind of tried to explain why I was there. But I think Dr. Rotino pointed in one of his Friday updates. If anybody has the opportunity, kind of eye-opening to see what's going on in the transportation department. I give our drivers a lot of credit, patience, definitely. And they are willing to, if anybody wants to ride, just let them know, so.
How long did the two and a half routes take?
I think it was on for like an hour, so about an hour, because it was the elementary route. So I got here at eight fifteen, and I think, if it was around nine fifteen, does that sound right for a time?
That sounds right.
Yeah. So, and it was tight streets. I was like, how do they do this? Like, I can't even imagine. The kids are standing like close to the road, I'm like, oh, get back, you know? Just amazing, and like I said, a lot of patience, so give them a lot of credit. It's awesome.
Yeah, let me know if anyone else wants to participate. We'll get you signed up and good time.
You're talking driving or riding?
Not, well, we can do driving in the parking lot and not, or riding in the street.
You can drive in the parking lot, it's so fun.
We can work on that, so we'll work on getting some of that. We're asking all the other cars move, though.
That's good.
Any other updates? All right, so closing items. Next meeting announcements, we're on Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting October ninth. We have a work session October tenth at seven, I should say, October ninth, is the Buildings and Ground at seven thirty AM. Work session is October tenth at seven thirty AM. Curriculum and Program Committee meeting October seventeenth at seven thirty AM. Finance Audit Personnel Committee meeting October nineteenth at eight fifteen AM. And our October Business meeting is October twenty-sixth at seven PM.
Does seven thirty AM work for administration?
No. Our junk box is at six.
I mean, better than, better than after, after working hours. I mean, I just want to speak to the fact that, like, I don't want to keep people here all the time.
All right, so that brings us to a adjournment. So I will make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-six PM.
Give it, give it, give it, whoever, who do you think is most deserving?
Thomas first.
All right. Rick, can you call the roll, please?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Gusskey.
Aye.
Lynn Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.